We're gonna go ahead and call this City Commission meeting to order. So, welcome everyone to our Commission Night Out. Thank you so much for joining us. We always love getting out of City Hall and into our neighborhoods. We're so delighted to be here in the 3rd Ward. I know it takes a lot of work from our entire city team to make this happen, so I just want to thank them as well. And so, if this is your first night to a Commission Night Out, and you're used to our meetings in the chambers, I want to just walk you through a couple differences for our Commission Night Out meetings. So, our Commission Night Out, just a few things are gonna be different tonight. And the most significant one is that because we start the evening at 5:00, we combine our public comment periods, and we do those at the beginning of the meeting, so that if you want to be heard by this body, you don't have to wait till the very end, especially if you've already been here for an hour and a half or two hours. And then, I'll also turn to my colleagues on the City Commission to make comments after we, at the beginning of the meeting. We do have three scheduled public hearings tonight, so those are gonna happen at the end of the meeting, and then we'll adjourn after those scheduled public hearings. So, if you haven't taken a look at our agenda, our three scheduled public hearings tonight, one is related to, they're all related to projects and developments. One's related to a project at 1163 Giddings. That's an Oprah or an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate. One is related to Habitat for Humanity, a project that we want to do on, it's called Pleasant Hills redevelopment project, and then the diatribe. So, if you are here tonight to be heard on any of those public hearings, I'm gonna ask you to just sit tight until I open up those public hearings, and we'll get to those a little bit later on. So, again, I'm calling this meeting to order tonight. We do have expectations. These are the same that we have in our Commission chambers. So, this is an official city business meeting, so we ask that you take a look at those and refrain from doing a number of things. We ask you to refrain from clapping, or cheering, or holding up signs. Also, we ask you to be respectful with your language, and not to make any derogatory comments or cursing. If you come up to speak, we do have a timer right here. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. So, with that, I'll next turn to a moment of silence. We'll move to Pledge of Allegiance. I'll introduce an interpreter, do roll call, and then we'll move to a public comment period. So, if you would join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have roll call.
Starting the 3rd Ward, Commissioner Goey.
Present.
Commissioner Perdue.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Commissioner Asasi.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and Commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Robbins, who is out for military service?
Support.
All right, moved and supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next, please come on up. We do have an interpreter available tonight, so if you need assistance with interpretation services, please let us know, and we are happy to provide assistance.
Good evening, my name is Sandra, and I will be interpreting from English to Spanish for anyone who is in need of buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sandra, y voy a estar aquí disponible para ayudarles a interpretar o traducir cualquier cosa que ustedes necesiten. Gracias.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, so again, tonight, we'll have public comment on any action items or agenda items, as well as any other public comment at this time. So, if you were here to speak on any issues either related to the agenda or other issues, you're welcome to come forward. Again, you can come right up here. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. You'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Martha Cooper. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I came tonight to speak about something I care about. I haven't spoken with you all in a long time. Unfortunately, the issues that I came and spoke about with affordable housing, we are still in a crisis here. It has not been abated, it has only gotten worse. I'm really, it's amazing, we've got an Affordable Housing Board, and as I understand, those meetings have been canceled more often. And I'm just wondering why our city does not come up with solutions. We are, I also wanted to speak out about the Destination Kent, which is about raising taxes on hotel stays in the city, so that we can afford to pay for things like an amphitheater, which by the way, has already been started being built, so. Or a soccer field while you say that there is no land for affordable housing. So, I'm just really quite upset about, what I know is that there was a half a million dollars raised for the campaign to have this passed. Those dollars came from the Chamber of Commerce, from the money class, and from the developers who will get the work to do it, and also from you, Mayor Bliss, which I wasn't surprised by. It looks to me like you're caring more about the economy. I fear for the neighbors of mine that are still unhoused. I know that when you count the homeless, you do it in January, and you don't count people who are living in hotels. You don't count people who are homeless and living with their family. The people that are living in hotels will pay that tax. I saw an article by Mr. Lung about the debate about this, and he was talking about it being $3.71, and I did the math, it'll be 110 or more dollars a month for somebody to live in a hotel, that's living in hotels, and you don't even count them. And I don't know how they're gonna vote anyway, but I just feel that this is really unjust, and we need to do something about it. We've got some ideas about, instead of selling bonds to put a parking lot, maybe we could do that for affordable housing. The city of, the county of Montgomery County, Maryland, is putting in 268 units, mixed income and mixed-use buildings, called the Loria in Montgomery County, Maryland. And if these people and these other municipalities are coming up with solutions...
Thank you, Martha.
Then why don't you?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
How's everybody doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. First of all, I want to say, go vote August 6th, and also vote November 5th. I actually put the event together with a bunch of black organizers. That was Dee Jones who put the event together that ABC 13 did after Joe Biden had announced that he was stepping down for the presidency, and then ABC 13 did that event. And we actually got people from the hood and people that own businesses in the hood, and owner of the Forest Art Theater, my guy right there. And we all came together and we did a cool event, and the news came there, we got a lot of people that's registered to vote, got a lot of popular people that's starting to use their voice to get people to get out there and vote. I actually am angry because I said to vote November 6th on that day, and I usually don't say the wrong thing, and it's people that lied to the public and fundraised, just to lie to the people, and that's not something that I do. So, be sure that y'all go vote August 6th and November 5th. Also, just very happy to be in this building because I just brought the president of the largest esports organization to the school board, so the infrastructure for esports is definitely gonna be happening. I just learned that, I really love Fortnite, I'm always on Fortnite, but I just learned that students can actually compete on the K-12 Fortnite teams, and actually get college scholarships. So, I put together a proposal and things like that that I possibly will be working with, on the city with, and I just learned that Fortnite is a game that the students can actually participate in. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how those synergies work, and how we can actually do things with bringing the city and the school district together, because I'm sure all you politicians care about the school district, the economy, and the future of these students. And that Dee Jones is definitely leading the path for esports here, for King County, for our city, and I believe there's gonna be a lot of success stories. You'll hear a lot of kids and parents happy that their kid got a college scholarship, and they used to tell them to get off the game, but now that the game is actually paying for them to go to college and get a good education, and hopefully a good career. So, a lot of cool things that I'm doing to change our infrastructure. Today, before I stepped, came and drove here, I was just at the Juvenile Service Center, and I was actually competing because I did the Youth Justice Influence League. And I actually played against one of the kids in NBA 2K, he beat me. I'm not one of those prideful people, so this kid beat me in NBA 2K today, and he was pretty happy, and I was like, hey, sometimes you gotta lose. But that's why I put those things together for the next generation, so they can be able to grow. Because I think I'm doing these things so you can find that person that becomes better than you. And that's why I do these things and put these esports initiatives together. And I'm helping with the criminal justice system and attacking the school-to-prison pipeline, and I know these things are gonna work. I know these things, initiatives are gonna work. I put a lot of time and research and energy into this, and a lot of love and energy and passion. So, I'm very excited for our school district, very excited for the city, for the county to lead globally. I'm a born leader, I'm a natural-born leader. Shout out to my mom, Miss Leo, it's her birthday August 13.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, hello, happy to be here tonight, thank you. My name is Siné Gant Jordan. I am a third generation here in our city of Grand Rapids. I'm here to speak to the development of Flower Hill, that Habitat is in progress of making happen, and I am happy to be part of that progress and watch them along the way. They have been intentional about reaching out to my group, Sisters in Development. I am a homeowner right next to their property, on the property where they are developing. And so, I'm excited to share with you that they are embracing Sisters in Development, and will be part of training, the boot camp with them, that's happening next month, I'm sorry, in September. And this is an opportunity for Sisters in Development to learn. So, all of us won't be going, but I know the, because it costs a couple thousand dollars, but I know the city can help support other Sisters in Development to be able to go to this program. It's only a week long, it's almost $2,000, but they reached out to me and said, hey, we want to support one of the Sisters in Development. And of course, it was gonna be me, because I'll be off work. So, there are other Sisters that are able to take off work to go to this program, and I'm hoping that the city will back us up. We've been applying for grants. Because we're not a nonprofit, and because we haven't been applying or been in the space to receive grants, we've been denied. And so, and for me, when I look at the city, that's not equity. That's not giving others an opportunity that have not had an opportunity before. This is an opportunity for us to show our children things that are possible, so that we can change the landscape for their future. So, I'm asking that the city look into this, find the dollars. I know there's dollars out there to make this happen. Move some money around, stop denying us opportunity. I'm looking at this packet that says, continuing our commitment to equity. And so, my hope and my vision is that you will begin to model more and take on the experience that Habitat is now doing. I'm so grateful for them changing the history, right? So, this is a real opportunity, and I'm hoping that you would invest in us as well. So, thank you so much.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christine Yarid. I'm a lifelong resident of this community. I'm here to speak on the Community Relations Commission Resolution regarding Palestine. It is such an essential, important issue, and our city has stood up for important issues in the past. South Africa, decades ago, we took a position in terms of LGBTQ and anti-discrimination ordinance, we took a position. And we're called on in history right now to do the same. I want to give a sense of what's going on. I agree with everything in the resolution that's been stated. The size of Gaza is 25 miles by 6 miles wide. So, I took to the map today, Rockford City Hall to Caledonia City Hall is 27 miles. 6 miles, the Grand Rapids Public Museum to Meyer Gardens. Within that space, there's 2.3 million people, and they can't leave. And they'd been told, we're gonna start in the north, just move down. Now, we're going further south, move down. And it's continued, and imagine the crisis we would be facing. And then imagine, there's no wheres to go, and we don't have a military in this area. And the country is, the world is watching, and if that was us, we would want support. We would want for people to stand up for us. A few other details. Currently, over 39,000 people have been killed, including over 15,000 children. Again, imagine that, in this community, our children, this happening to them, and we can't do anything about it. Some additional facts, since this has started, more than half of Gaza's homes have been destroyed or damaged. More than half, again, picture that in this community. 80% of commercial facilities, 88% of school buildings, 88% of school buildings destroyed. 16 of 35 hospitals are partially functioning, 65% of road networks, and 267 places of worship. This is a crisis. I think it's important for us to look at it in terms of what we would feel like, and how, what kind of a crisis it would be for us, and to look at that, and I urge you to pass this resolution. It's the right thing to do, it makes, I'm proud of this city. I've lived here my whole life. This would, this would consistent with that pride, that we'd do the right thing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Andra from Grand Rapids. Preparing to come here to speak, I often think semantics and linguistics, like, what will be the most effective way to get my point across to not only hear me, but actually pay attention? Should I reasonably ask for your help? Should I say, no, screw that, I'm not asking, I'm demanding, because I'm the voice of the people? Or is this crucial enough that I'm willing to beg you as fellow humans? I stand here before you, begging you to form a resolution boycotting, divesting, and sanctioning Israel and its war crimes, to stop the genocide and endless torture in Gaza. Last time I was here calling for a public ceasefire in Gaza, we didn't get very far. We only got told that we were misinformed about how and where the funding is delegated from. It was actually denial, because although we have to operate within the confines of the federal government, there is more you all can do. You all hold some power. You can start by refusing to do business with companies who invest in Israel, like using Granicus Business Software. Lastly, I wanted to state that three US cities have successfully passed BDS resolutions. A city council 11 minutes north of Detroit called Hamtramck is the first city to fully endorse a BDS resolution. Since we are the second-largest city in Michigan, I think it would make national news if Grand Rapids followed behind them and divested in Israel. It's time that we stand on the right side of history and do what we can, which is directly stopping the flow of money. I painted this last year. It says, "The rockets might be above us, but they have forgotten that Allah is above them." I'm not Muslim, I'm not religious, I just empathize as a human being, and I feel like when we go through unimaginable horror, sometimes all we have to hold on to is hope and faith. Praying for Gaza, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is John Williamson. I live on the southeast side. I've lived in Grand Rapids around 20 years. I want to speak out against violence. In Rosa Parks Circle, in broad daylight, wearing a Patrick Leoya shirt at a Black Lives Matter protest, I was thrown on the ground by police. And a man twisted, hit my hand behind my back, and forced me into a car. And it was the most violent I'd ever been treated. It was the Grand Rapids Police, and I was there using my first amendment right to speak out against police violence. So, there's a major problem with violence and police violence in Grand Rapids. You may have heard, "Love your enemy," but I tell you, "Love your neighbor." Love is the only force powerful enough to turn an enemy into a friend. Hate cannot cast out hate, only love can do that. Darkness cannot cast out darkness, only light can do that. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. Black Lives Matter. When you see something is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up, you have to say something, you have to do something. Violence is evil. Whatever evil is, violence is. Returning violence for violence multiplies violence. Instead of diminishing evil, violence spreads evil. Nonviolence is the most powerful force at the disposal of humankind. Peaceful protest is mightier than the mightiest weapon of violence devised by man. Whoever wields the light of nonviolence is ennobled and empowered by... Whoever wields the light of nonviolence is ennobled and empowered by the highest love for humanity. Peaceful protesters like John Lewis have not struck a blow, but we have received them and through our pain, we will make them see their injustice. And it will hurt as all violence hurts, but we cannot lose. We cannot. You can't stop the revolution. We shall overcome. We shall all be free. God's justice cannot sleep forever. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Blessed are those who mourn. Justice for Riley Doggett. Justice for Samuel DeJohn Cornelius Sterling. Whoever saves one life, saves the world entire. Justice for Joey Nagel. Blessed are the peacemakers, for we shall be called children of God. Justice for John Lewis. Justice for black people. Violence cannot cast out violence, only peace can do that. Free Palestine. Free Congo. Free Sudan. Justice for Sonia Massey. Justice for all stolen lives. The time is always right to do the right thing. I call on the city commission and all employees to stand up when you see police violence in the city and it is wrong. Justice for all stolen lives. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I've been, I've been here before. I am, I am Matthew and I live in, we live in Grand Rapids and I've spoken to you before and I would like to saw a voice behind Melanie, a very old lady who in her ministry, Melanie Drowsky and the ward we are in is Joyce's, Joyce Gibson's ward, so, I mean, so, vote for her as well and also on the county committee, commission Derrick Richardson and Josie and, but my main, the, I came here to say that, but we also came, all this thing about Israel, it is not, it is not, yeah, it is Israel, but they like, all of us have a right to defend themselves and it is not, it was, it is not Israel, it is actually Hamas and Mohammed because that's what Islam gets want because they think Mohammed and Allah were great prophets. Actually, they killed their own people and just like Adolf Hitler, who the, who the founder of Planned Genocide was a great friend of and was pleased to speak at, speak at the meanings of the lady addition of the KKK, but enough about that. We are here that, you know, you know what, see what my sister says, we, we are here to condemn the violence that goes on. Praise the Lord and we are very grateful that 3/20, we did not pray for his death, but 3/20 is finally closed, but now our prayers continue that 4/25 is true, is closed because, will be closed because they are studying innocent blood and a heartless human being is doing what Thomas Gordon did to millions at 3/20, the same is happening at 4/25 is true. Thank you and God bless you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens behind me or watching by way of video. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the city. But more importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I couldn't make it last month, but I did want to acknowledge Juneteenth, the end of black slavery in our country. I'm grateful for that anniversary, by the way. Abraham Lincoln, one of our greatest presidents who gave his life to free the slaves, was a devout follower of Christ. Same with the man who led the fight to end slavery in the UK, not long before we ended it. His name is Wilbur, Wilberforce. You can Google that if you get bored with the rest of my presentation, but he spearheaded the effort to end slavery in the UK. Well, there's still slavery in our country, specifically and especially of the African-Americans. Don't just take my word for it. Take Martin Luther King Jr.'s words when he said this, "How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted baby is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother? The mother decides his or her fate." I don't think he believed in choice. Fifty-four percent of African-Americans believe that quote, "Planned Parenthood is purposely targeting black people to murder them through abortion," unquote. This is exactly what the founder of Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger, said herself. Quote, "We don't want the word to get out that we want to exterminate the Negro population. They are human weeds, reckless breeders, spawning human beings who never should have been born." I accepted an invitation to talk to the women's branch of the Ku Klux Klan. Also, as my son said, she was good friends with Adolf Hitler. Margaret Sanger. And that place at 4/25 East Cherry is murdering, they call them Planned Parenthood, which would be a result of her policy, murdering babies every day. Please, do all you can to shut that place down. If we do, we will see less violence in this city because Holy Scripture says, "You sow peace, you reap peace; you sow violence, you reap violence."
All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maurice Vernon Barnes Jr. I'm trying to catch myself when you use the word Negro, so I want to say hi, Anita. We go way back, Roosevelt was her, she was in, we played basketball together in Union. I had a lot of disparaging remarks that I wanted to use, but I'm sure that's not part of the decorum. I was born in East Grand Rapids, raised right here at Sycamore and Lafayette. Public school student here, Union High School, Michigan State University. Former Grammer's Police Officer, 13 years, Alvin Policeman Year, city councilman with Alvin, Michigan. And I look at you guys, I'm going to give you the utmost respect. I have a lot of problems based on my history and being in the system. And I'm sure, you know, maybe in six months you'll probably vote, bring this comments down to two minutes because I know you really don't want to hear them. That's just from my heart. You want to move this meeting on, you want to get done and you want to go home and dig with your lives. I'm from the third ward. I'm recently back here from Houston, Texas and some of the things that I'm seeing is disheartening. The first thing that I'm upset with is that two years ago, a man by your own police chief was fired for shooting an unarmed man, even though the taser allegedly was under his body in the back of the head with a firearm. Your city manager, you know, approved that in conjunction with the police chief. My problem now is, two years ago, no disrespect needed, I know I love you dearly, but there should be some type of conversation with these judges through the city attorney's office, through the city manager's office. We need to address this for the safety of our citizens. This was a sworn Grammer's Police Officer who did in fact commit this act, which he was fired and charged for. That should be brought to the forefront. And why not? I don't understand. It's in election season, some of you are endorsing people for office, but you're not mentioning or stating anything about some of the platforms or the elements. I wish you would. And at my home, all of these curves are broken up by your own people, your plow drivers. Thank you, have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Gloria Cook. I am with the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition and I live in the second ward. So, I was just reading through some of the things on the website and it says that your fiscal committee has greenlit contracts and payments totaling $250,000 to three degrees in sole systems to purchase renewable energy. Renewable energy credits for this year and next. This means Grand Rapids is set to be 100% renewable energy for all municipal operations. Renewable energy credits do not curtail energy from fossil fuels or limit their production. It does allow those who purchase them to write off carbon emissions without requiring them to reduce their current emissions. So, what can we really do besides renewable energy? What about using some real methods to reduce emissions? Consider cool roofs or green roofs. Grand Rapids may be something not in favor of green roofs, but the Ford Rogue Factory has one of the largest living roofs in the world, right here in Michigan. Does this, the, right near here is this new building going up for the MLK Park. Very nice looking facility it's going to be. But will they have a cool roof? Will they have a green roof? I know they won't have solar panels because that's not in there. So, I'd just like you to think about some other ways instead of the renewable energy credits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Gloria. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shayden.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff. My name is Janet Zahn with the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition and First Ward Resident. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Last week, the planet had the three hottest days in the past 100,000 years. Think about that. I'm here to speak on the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal of 62.8% by 2030. You have received the open letter to the city from GRCC regarding the need to move swiftly, decisively, and with vigor to lead the charge for the community as a whole. When the goal was announced, we were pleased to hear that Grand Rapids was following the science-based recommendations of ICLI. We have been a grateful and enthusiastic partner in providing input for the new community master plan and the cap. As noted recently by the consultants, environmental sustainability was the category of comment received most broadly throughout all the CMP sessions. We see this as clear evidence that the community indeed cares about addressing the climate emergency and seeking ways to improve air quality and access to affordable, efficient housing, healthy local food, waste reduction, expanding, excuse me, expanding green transportation and investment in energy efficiency. While the city continues to seek a path to solar at Butterworth, sadly, it has failed to take other strong action to help meet its own greenhouse gas reduction goals, instead using the wasteful strategy mentioned by Gloria of using precious city dollars on recs rather than investing in renewable energy infrastructure in significant ways. Furthermore, the city has failed to live up to its stated construction policy, let alone provide motivation for sustainable building in major public projects. This fails to embrace the future of energy efficiency, documented sustainable construction practices, and keeps us falling behind rather than living up to our self-proclaimed green image. Let's not miss the opportunity to lean into this critical goal by seeking the federal funds available to undertake meaningful projects which will help bring climate justice and a hopeful future to our community. LEDs, green infrastructure, and increased tree canopy are important pieces of the solutions, but they will not get us to carbon neutrality alone. We want to see a well-funded office of sustainability, transparency in the progress made, and a clear commitment to building community participation in achieving this important goal. We are eager to be your partner in making this happen. We're all in it together, the world is on fire, and 2030 is ever closer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I wasn't expecting, well, Nalasha Kent County, I wasn't expecting to be back here. Oh, oh, my bad, my bad, hold on, I got a video I want to show y'all because I was racially profiled. I left Grand Rapids June 11th and I arrived in racist Raleigh, North Carolina on June 13th. Six hours and 44 minutes into my arrival, I was racially profiled and falsely accused of shoplifting and I literally went there, handled some important business. Five minutes after I got off the bus at the Go Raleigh Transit Center, officers Nathaniel Pokarski and David Deitch of the Raleigh Police Department told me that I had stolen something. So, I'm glad that I had enough common sense to record the encounter because if I didn't, it would have been my word against theirs. The cops, they need to be defunded, it needs a complete overhaul because I told y'all sometime last year that I have two brothers who were physically assaulted by Grand Rapids Police. Now, me leaving Michigan, trying to better my circumstances, it was an egregious act of racial profiling and racism that I didn't deserve. It was so traumatic, I turned around and left Raleigh, North Carolina on the 14th. I was stranded in Baltimore, Maryland. I was minding my black business. Being black in America is stressful because I don't care if we're committing crimes or we're eating ice cream on a hot summer day. We are racially profiled and I'm tired of it. I see it in Grand Rapids, I don't care. The divided states of America needs to do better when it comes to these cops because they get to do whatever they want to without many repercussions. And quite frankly, I didn't deserve it because I left here and I had to turn right back around because of racial profiling and being falsely accused of stealing. If I was Becky with blonde hair and blue eyes, they would have approached me with respect, but they put disrespect on my name simply because I'm a big, tall, black woman. The darker you are in complexion when it comes to black people, the more associated white people think we are with crime. I'm 41, I've never been to jail. Like I say repeatedly, I'm not trying to sing the Jailhouse Rock. Do I look like Elvis Presley? I'm tired of cops brutalizing and beating people with no repercussions. There is a black city manager, there is a black chief of police by the name of Estella Patterson. She doesn't care. So, before my time runs out. I'm being falsely accused, I'm new to this town.
Me too.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
That don't look wrong. What is ringing in your backpack? Ma'am, what is ringing in your?
Nothing, nothing. You asked me what is ringing in my backpack? Your name is, what's your name? And what is your name?
Oh, you don't hear that?
Because you're accusing me of stealing, I'm literally, I'm literally, I was over here at the Central, at the Transit Center? Nothing. So, let me ask you, why did, nothing is ringing in my backpack? I asked you why you're profiling me and y'all came over here with me? Y'all came over here with an attitude. You came over here with an attitude. They got close to me and I'm surprised that they didn't bust a few caps in ours. Justice for Sonia Massey and every other black person.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hey, how's it going? Lucas, First Ward. I kept not being able to get to it and I wanted to come out. I actually pretty pooped. I spent the day at City High School's band room getting the drum line and the front ensemble set up for band camp as a volunteer. So, I thought about sitting on the recliner, but I keep telling you, I want to come and tell you when I see great stuff and I'm not getting it done because I find other things to stick my nose into. So, I'm mostly here tonight because of this format to tell you, this is a great format. And I really want people to understand, there's no law written that requires this kind of meeting. This is entirely city choice, city policy. And like the Neighborhood Summit, which I continue to be impressed by, it's just a really interesting piece of the dynamic that's offered. the dynamic that's offered. It was easy to get here and be disappointed because Patrick Leoya incident happened right after I moved into town. I thought I got away from some big city problems and fell right smack in the middle of them and had a lot of anger to deal with. But there's also a lot of good stuff that gets done. There's a lot of communications improvement. I just figured it needed a good mention. And there is a communication I will address, mostly because I think you need someone in the room saying something other than what this letter says. So tonight, in your communication record, you've got a weird Karen letter that urges you to pursue some proven failed policing policies. Contrary to what Fox News is apparently telling the people that signed that letter, violent crime is down 49%. Property crime is down 59% in the last 30 years. We should probably all remember that between now and November 5th because you're gonna hear a lot of things that are completely false concerning those. Your letter that you're gonna see in your record talks about vandalism, littering, vagrancy, and public intoxication. We can deal with vandalism by embracing SEPTED and other security practices which require the owner of property to take personal responsibility and intentionality. We can deal with littering with more public trash receptacles and pursuing concepts like trash equity. We can deal with vagrancy and public intoxication when you open your ears to the exhaustive amount of resources we urge government to step up and provide every day to the real causes behind this stuff. And if you want me to stop using words like Karen, then stop using words like vagrancy. Instead of clinging to outdated blasts from the past, I encourage these folks to learn some facts and maybe get involved in actual solutions. Engage with other departments like the ones that are here tonight. Join your neighborhood organization instead of trying to outsource everything to the police. I know goofy police fandom runs deep, but there are a wealth of other hardworking departments in this building tonight ready to help engage and talk about ideas and solutions. So appreciate you guys doing that and I hope people that sign those weird letters that are not official petitions will engage in those departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lucas. All right, others wish to be heard?
Jeff Smith, I live in the ward that Commissioner Sasey and Commissioner Knight directly represent, the Second Ward. So I know that many of you or all of you have received letters from people in the community about urging the city to divest specifically from companies that are benefiting from Israeli occupation, Israeli apartheid, and the genocide that is being committed against Palestinians. This divestment campaign was created by Palestinians 25 years ago called the BDS Campaign or the Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement, which has received faith-based support, labor support, community support, government body support, and tons of other civil society groups. So this body has previously told us, when we were asking about the city passing a resolution and calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, that it was not city business. But I believe this is city business, especially when the city of Grand Rapids has financial relationships with companies that are profiting from Israeli occupation and genocide. So what we were asking for, and I was one of the people who met with the Community Relations Commission back in April, and I'm happy to continue to meet and talk about this with anybody who wants to talk about it, is, are the, sort of the following demands. One, to terminate its current contract with Gronkis by the end of the year. In March of this year, Gronkis announced on their own website that they now have a strategic collaboration agreement with Amazon Web Services, AWS. AWS has contracts with the Israeli military, which besides the cloud services that they provide them, they also provide AI support so that the Israeli military can more effectively target Palestinian civilians. AWS is a company that the International BDS Campaign has targeted for divestment. So you really can't claim innocence if you have a strategic partner with a company that has blood on its hands. Being in partnership with AWS means that Gronkis also has blood on its hands. The second ask is to cease funding, cease providing any funds to Grand Rapids Downtown Inc. because it utilizes AWS technology for its committees. All you have to do is go look at their portal and you'll see AWS as the list that comes up. And the third is to commit refraining from entering. You don't currently have them, but to commit from entering into financial agreements with Caterpillar, Motorola Solutions, Hewlett-Packard, and G4S corporations until the Israeli government ends its genocide and occupation of Palestinian lands. As some people have mentioned already, Grand Rapids took a very similar action and stance in the 1980s. They divested because of a campaign organized then
Thanks.
to divest, and so I'm asking you to do the same.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Sarah. I'm a mother and a teacher and I live in Kentwood. Yes. I don't have a baby grabbing the microphone this time, so it's pretty exciting. I want to kind of piggyback on what Jeff said and what another woman that was up here earlier said. As you are aware, the genocide in Gaza, the siege in Gaza, the starvation, the contaminated water that's leading to the spread of hepatitis A and polio, among other diseases, millions of displaced people sleeping on the ground. Gaza is becoming a graveyard of children, mothers, and babies killed with American-made bombs. I think we can all agree that there is nothing anti-Semitic about respecting the human rights of everyone. And one way that we can respect the Palestinians and the citizens of Grand Rapids is divestment. And so three cities in the United States have done this and you could make history by joining them. Michigan is a swing state for the upcoming election and a statement in support of the Palestinians from you, our local government, will be heard on a national level and have a chance to impact national policy. Just like in 1982 when the Grand Rapids City Commissioners divested from South Africa, you have a chance to be on the right side of history. And I think it's amazing that they set that precedent for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Yes. My name is Maria Woltersdorf. This is my kiddo Francis. I just want to read a little poem for you guys because I think a lot of eloquent things have been said already.
I know.
Thank you. About Palestine and how, how powerful our votes are in ending the genocide. So here's the poem. This is by a Palestinian poet named...
Shh, shh, shh.
Can I do this, Kate? By Gassan Kanafani, lived from 1936 until 1972. So this is an older poem because as we all know, this has been going on for way longer than October 7. This is called "I Wish Children Didn't Die." "I wish children didn't die. I wish they would be temporarily elevated to the skies until the war ends. Then they would return home safe, and when their parents would ask them, 'Where were you?' They would say, 'We were playing in the clouds.'" Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cortland from the First Ward. I'm here on behalf of the divestment resolution. I'm not sure what y'all are doing with it. I assume it's in a trashcan somewhere because it hasn't been on any agenda. I don't understand what the difference between divesting from Israel today versus divesting from South Africa in 1982 is, except in this case, there is a genocide component as well. I think it's so depressing for us to just ignore the entire issue. I understand y'all have a stance on no resolutions whatsoever. Cool? Well, there's a direct precedent for a divestment in this very city, but to not even have the discussion or a vote, I think it's very depressing. So I hope you'll consider backtracking on that and at least talking about it. You know, if you're against it, vote against it, you know, be public. So.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, Ren Burns, Second Ward. To continue on the conversation about Palestine and our complicity in it, I would say that, start by reading the 1982 Resolution to divest from South Africa, read, "We feel very strongly that the people of Grand Rapids should not be forced to support racism. The fact that racism in Palestine is guaranteed through the legislated bodies of the colony of Israel makes the use of our monies to aid those in power there even more repugnant. The situation in Palestine is far worse than in Israel has been found guilty by the International Court of Justice of illegal and violent land seizure, the creation of illegal settlements, and an ongoing genocide in Gaza. Israel is in violation of its own laws and has since 1948 engaged in the violent displacement of illegal seizure of land of those indigenous peoples of Palestine, including Jewish people. We must continue to elevate the voices of indigenous peoples of this world if we want to move away from the violent cultural scarcity, the destruction of our environment, and ultimately of the human race, which is what we're all afraid of with climate change. We destroy ourselves and it is not children who throw rocks of self-determination who are to blame. It is those few people who with our tax dollars and our silence drop 2,000-pound bombs on their heads and who spread the toxic and deadly narrative that there is not enough room for all of us. My inheritance unfortunately is colonialism. But one thing I refuse to do is to say that I am less capable of imagining my future because of the transgressions of my grandparents and those who ruled them. My family also faced their greatest fears of change, moved to the other side of the world, a place unfamiliar with bravery, and today, that bravery is also my inheritance. For, we must all be brave to reimagine a world where we are free to stop reinventing colonial destruction but to continue to build the coalitions necessary to create a world that has a future. It is not in human nature nor in anyone's nature to give up when faced with catastrophe, and we know it is of our own making. Today, climate change threatens the end of humanity, but when I listen to Palestinian people, those who face their own expedited extermination, I do not hear or see any reason to quit. Rather, when I listen to any indigenous nation in the world, I see and hear the hope for our future. The only thing that stands in our way is our inability to refocus our efforts toward the necessary healing of this planet requires, which is only impeded by our geopolitical borders and our disassociation from this urgency. Solidarity with Palestine is solidarity with the future of the world. Palestinian people want to go home because it is the land they know how to care for, and it is in everyone's best interest for those with the deepest connections to the stewardship of the land, the environment, to be free to do so. That is why solidarity is about liberation, not the redrawing of lines or the separation of people.
All right.
How we invest in our future is the most powerful tool of the municipality of Grand Rapids.
Hi.
I'm Krishan White, also with Sisters in Development, and I would like to double down and ask that the commission thinks about sponsoring one of us in the development program with Habitat for Community, or Habitat for Humanity, sorry. And I do live in the Third Ward and have been a member here for over 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jacinda Swanson. I live in the Third Ward. I'm speaking tonight not in favor of the Community Relations Commission's proposed divestment resolution for reasons I will allude to, but in favor of divestment from Israel more generally like other speakers have. My best friend during grad school was Neve Gordon, an Israeli Jew. My partner and I shared countless meals and celebrated many Jewish holidays with Neve and her other Jewish friends at Notre Dame. In 2009, Dr. Gordon, who teaches and writes about human rights and the horror of the Israeli occupation and apartheid system, wrote an op-ed in the Los Angeles Times supporting the Palestinian-led movement for boycott, divestment, and sanctions, BDS. It was launched in 2005. Calling for governments, businesses, universities, and labor unions to boycott, divest, and sanction his own country was not an easy decision for Neve. But after decades working within the peace movement and alongside Palestinians, Neve concluded that BDS was, quote, "The only way that Israel can be saved from itself." His op-ed and his other pro-Palestinian activism and writing led to death threats and being driven out of his academic position in Israel and thus out of Israel entirely. Thanks to Neve's moral and intellectual leadership and clarity, I have also long supported the BDS movement and its demands that, quote, "Israel meets its obligations to recognize the Palestinian people's inalienable right to self-determination and fully complies with the precepts of international law by, one, ending its occupation and colonization of all Arab lands and dismantling the wall, two, recognizing the fundamental rights of Arab-Palestinian citizens of Israel to full equality, and, three, respecting, protecting, and promoting the rights of Palestinian refugees to return to their homes and properties as stipulated in UN Resolution 194. If Grand Rapids is to actually live up to its professed values of opposing racism, discrimination, and inhumane treatment, rather than just make empty professions, it must, at a bare minimum, divest from Israeli government and all companies and institutions that participate in its war crimes, its genocide, its illegal apartheid system, and its illegal occupation of Gaza and the West Bank. Both the International Court of Justice and the International Criminal Court have charged or concluded that these are injustices and violations of international law are occurring. Grand Rapids must divest."
Hi, Justin Adio, Grand Rapids. I don't have anything written out and I'm just gonna have to talk off the top of my head, general ideas I've had. So often, you turn on the TV set and you just look and you say, wow, if only I had, could do something about all this war and starvation and poverty and racism and whatever, I would do it. But what am I? I'm just one person. Well, today, you guys have that possibility. You have the power to make a difference by divesting from Israel, by boycotting and sanctioning, well, divesting specifically, but you have the power to do this. And you can, and you should. It's, you know, this is, this is the right thing to do. It's, if you could do it, you should do it. And you can. So please, I ask that you do this and you don't do what you did when Justice for Black Lives were protesting, which was shoot the messenger. You outright made it illegal for them to protest in many different ways. And as a result, you don't see it as much anymore because of the war you had on activists here. So don't do that. Do the right thing, please. And, you know, we, you know, they, they told you after, you know, all the protests, the waves of protests in 2020, what was going on and it was ignored. And then Patrick Leoya happened and that infamously put Grand Rapids on the national radar. You were told that. You were warned and you didn't take the opportunity to change things. And it happened. And right down the street from me last year, a young man was, was run over by an undercover cop, right down the street out of Burger King. So it keeps happening. And it shouldn't. But you have the power right now, at least with this, to do the right thing. And I think of a quote from the author Faulkner who once said, "The past is never dead. In fact, it isn't even the past." And that's true. If you, you know, we've gone through slavery, we've gone through a civil rights movement, and now there is an entire still berserkly, out-of-control racist legal and system with cops without any check. And that's still going on. So until you actually change things, nothing actually changes. So those are the two things you should do. But right now, the main thing to focus on is Palestine because you can pass this term. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Marcus Ringnalda and I'm the founder and president of the Friends of Four Star nonprofit, which five years ago just about formed a mission to create a world-class, multi-use cultural arts venue at the iconic Four Star Theater at Burton and Division, which once sat 900 patrons, then became a music hall where Hall of Famers played, then a nightclub, and a youth center that had vacancy and a youth center that had a vacancy period of almost 20 years before my organization put on our belt and suspenders and got open about three years ago. We run as volunteers. We've had over 1,000 visitors every month since October. All kinds of music, oftentimes tickets priced at the cost of a beer at a downtown venue. Punk, electronic, jazz, hip-hop, R&B, dance events, art exhibitions, family celebrations, and sometimes Dee Jones brings the hood out. I'm also a construction consultant, working with multiple housing organizations within the city and surrounding counties, working in development every day. I'm here today in response to a briefing you all received at your last meeting about the potential sale of the Burton South Lot, which is near the theater, which would include the sale of something on the order of 130 parking spaces for a small-scale affordable housing development. The frustrating thing to me was the reference to the area-specific plan that's been in place about six years and kind of a suggestion that it would support this kind of development when it's quite clear that that sacrifice of parking is about 10 times what is clearly stated in that plan. So I want to commend the commissioners who spoke on behalf of businesses. We have a meeting with that development team as a business association later this week. They're wonderful organizations. We think there'll be respectful dialogue, even though tensions may be high. I just want to take a moment to talk about area-specific plans and supporting the outcomes that, for the priorities that are identified in those plans. The Planning Department invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into the area-specific plan. It was followed by Division United, collectively something on the order of $2 million. To talk about, let's support development on South Division. What kinds of equitable development do we want to see? What's great is it can create a coalition of community stakeholders to come together in moments like this. But it's frustrating when priorities identified in those plans are not supported. Without support, implementation won't happen. The Four Star Theater is one of those priority projects. So what does support look like? So this started in the Planning Department. I would love to see this expand to Commissioners, to Economic Development, to the City Manager's Office. And then if public funds can be a solution, extending farther to the county, to the state, federal, and other community funders. So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Leisha Fagan, a retired teacher from Grand Rapids Public Schools and a resident of East Hills. I'm here to echo and applaud and join the voices that are asking you to divest from the companies that are benefiting from doing business with Israel, which has been deemed to be an apartheid nation, which is committing genocide. I echo the person who said, "I don't want to be part of this genocide." I, you can, and I echo the person who says, "You can stand up and you can let Grand Rapids be on the map for something really beautiful." And that is, draw a moral line where it belongs. And now I ask you to imagine over 14,000 children in this city brutally, violently blown to pieces with their families. And those who remain in the city, starving, nowhere to go. They may be next. I have heard more people on the streets, so to speak, street, in the rubble in Palestine say, I mean, from children this high to mothers and fathers say, "I just want to die because I can't live like this anymore. And I hope when I die, my whole family goes with me because I don't want to leave them. And I don't want them to have to keep suffering like this." I leave you with the words of James Baldwin, who wrote,[908.91][910.53]"The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe." He adds, "And I'm beginning to suspect that whoever is incapable of recognizing this may be incapable of morality." Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there. Thank you. Thank you for listening. I hope you will have heard us all. My name is Nadal Kanen. I'm a Palestinian-American, born and raised in Kalamazoo and been in Grand Rapids since 2002. I'm proud of Grand Rapids. I want to continue to be proud of Grand Rapids. I was born to Azam and Shadia. They are my parents. They are both older than the state of Israel. They were, their whole childhood and memories of land being taken away, murder, torture, anything you can think of. This is not from October 7th. This is from 1948. Every hour, I see the worst thing I've ever seen in my life, every single hour, and I can't understate that. I'm not going to share the most horrible things, but I do want to share one. A young man with autism and Down Syndrome, a young Palestinian man, the Israeli soldiers had their attack dog kill him. Why? Because they can. And this is disturbing. When you think about that, when you think about that mindset, that culture, that is scary. That needs to concern all of us deeply. Now, we can't change the world, but we can change this city. And again, I want to be proud of the city. We need help. You can do this. You can set an example. You can help us by doing the right thing. And I want you to consider us from a human standpoint. You're humans. We're humans. We need help. We're not getting it. We're helpless. We have nothing. We have no food, no water. We need help. And this is how change happens in places like this, and I have faith that change will happen. And I hope that this city is on the right side of it, and I beg you, please consider it. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Jax Johnson, and I'm from Grand Rapids. I'm here to express my support for the resolution calling for the city of Grand Rapids to terminate contracts and business with Granicus. Joining me in my support are a few family members who could not be here tonight but wish to have their support known. These family members are my mother, Emiliana Johnson, and my sibling Ella Johnson, who both live in Grand Rapids. I worry very dearly for my Palestinian neighbors, both here in Grand Rapids and overseas. All I can hope is that the Grand Rapids City Commission recognizes the need to support our neighbors and communities, both here in Grand Rapids and overseas. We must take action to uphold our values of equity and nondiscrimination and to uphold the inherent value of all human life. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Kimbra Martin. I live in Grand Rapids. I've been here for my whole life. I work downtown at the Van Anan Arena, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I've been seeing like a raise of like violence and like poverty level that it was like an issue that has been going on for like, I want to say decades. But I just see it now as like a problem that most people is getting mugged at the work that I work at. Some people that don't, don't even want to come into work because it's like they try to go into work, work their ass off, I mean, sorry for my language, but work their tail off just for a check that they came and support their own house. Someone living like low-income buildings and all that stuff, but now it's getting too high for them to even live. So I just wanted to reach out to y'all and say like, can we at least try to lower the cost of living, trying to get more help downtown for people that can make it home safely at night and just everybody have peace again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others who should be heard?
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. The people who have spoke before me in public comment said some interesting things. But everything can be solved by doing one thing, and that's to vote. If you want to preserve carbon neutral and climate change, go out and vote. If protesters want to protest peacefully without the National Guard coming in with their automatic, you don't want that, go out and vote. And if you don't, and if you don't want the genocide to continue, go out and vote. It's that simple. Because y'all know, the orange man, if he gets in office, he could care less about what the people think. Because he will give police total immunity to do whatever they damn well please and won't be held accountable for it. That's a fact. He said it himself. He's talking about stop and frisk. If you don't want that to happen, go out and vote. If you don't want women to be faced with abortion bans and allow the states to do whatever they damn well please, like people, like the governor in Louisiana, go try to put ankle monitors on pregnant women so they won't leave the state, or in the case of Texas, they're considering the death penalty on women who have an abortion. You don't want that to happen, get out and vote. The time is now. Get registered, get out, and vote. The lives of the people are at stake. You ignore it, then it'll be your fault. But if you want, if you want that not to happen, go out and vote because you can mean the difference between democracy and dictatorship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, others who should be heard? Hi.
Hello, I'm Ebony. I'm also with Sisters in Development. And I just come up here today asking that the city support us. Piggyback off of Siné Jordan when she said we're looking for the grants. We're being denied. So come to you, asking that you guys support Sisters in Development, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ebony.
Hello, my name is Journey. I am currently having a housing crisis myself, so I definitely understand where a lot of these people are coming from when it comes to how you guys are going about homelessness. It's terrifying to think that at any point in time, I could be imprisoned for it. But on top of that, I would like to share a poem. Homo sapiens, we call ourselves, rulers of this earth, intelligent and civilized, but what is all this worth? We're working hard to conquer space. We landed on our moon. We better solve our problems. But here, we're all facing doom. New industries, new factories constructed every day. In each breath we take, the poison in the air, what is this price we have to pay? Energy sources are shrinking. What will happen when there's none? Will man of earth ever learn to work with nature as one? Some in this world are still starving, still while others hoard all of their gold. Intelligent and civilized, at least, that's what we're told. We cure diseases with drugs that may cause sickness as a result. How many dearly pay for this experimental cost? We have become plastic when everything in this world is fake. From the foods we eat to how we look, how are we still awake? We're civilized, we tell ourselves, but we fight with our fellow men. If only we could solve world stresses through a better plan. With government corruption, morality sinking low, the price of progression, we may say, is this how we grow? We have upset earth, destroying nature's scheme. We're intelligent and civilized, but is all of that a dream? Will we ever walk with nature, take her by the hand, restore the beauty that's meant to be on our dying land? Homo sapiens, we call ourselves, rulers of this earth, intelligent and civilized, but what is all of that worth? So on top of that, I also work with a few nonprofits in the area. One of them is Community Collaboration on Climate Change, C4. And I have a project coming out. It's called The Jar's Journey. And for me, it's going to be focusing on climate change, environmental justice, and community resilience. We're going to have monthly workshops where we'll be learning about different type of educational lessons, and I would love to invite all of you out to come out and express anything that you have on your mind. We're going to have a podcast as well as just having different type of guest speakers coming out and having the community introduce themselves. I would love to have the city behind it so we can get some of your thoughts as well. You all have important decisions to make, and we would love to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard? Okay, I'm going to close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues to see if they have any comments before we move right along to our agenda. I'll start down here, since we're in the Third Ward. I'll start down here with Commissioner Goy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to all of you who expressed your concerns to us as a commission. I've heard you. I don't have all the answers yet, or I don't know if it'll ever come up with the answers. I too fled a country that was oppressive to its people. I'm not quite sure if the recommendations that is being presented to us is a solution for these issues. What I do know is that the Third Ward that I represent is also a ward that has many people who have needs and who I am responsible for to represent. I understand the the desires of many of you to look at other places, but for me, right now, I I feel that my responsibilities are to address the issues that are right here at home. And I think that it is important, we we are a city that is doing its best and doing great works, and yet we also have still, we still have needs. And so for me, as a Christian, I'm going to say and follow what I believe is my calling, which is to say that as much as I will certainly not forget what I heard today, but I'm going to continue to fulfill my responsibility to begin at home and to address the needs of those who are living within the Third Ward in the city of Grand Rapids. But thank you for your comments. I've heard you, and I thank you for those.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Perdue?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So great to see so many of you in person out at Commission Night Out in the Third Ward. Want to also say thank you for everyone who shared today, who spoke, who advocated around Israel-Palestine, around climate change, around entering development, all really important and timely topics. I also appreciate the comments around the area-specific plan and kind of our recent presentations. Really helpful to hear directly from you here in this platform. Earlier today, we had a really great conversation about how we might progress towards our goals and solutions around housing in our city, particularly affordable housing in our city. Last meeting day, we also had a briefing of the community master plan draft, and so that was part of that conversation. Area-specific plans came up there. And so there's tons of intersections in every conversation that we have and really every issue we want to, we talk about. And so I just wanted to share that today so that you all know that these conversations are ongoing. And I think we're making progress, though. And I think we're making progress though. Let's see where we land. I want to highlight two things that we voted on earlier today that are specific to the third ward or specific to some issues that came up tonight during public comment. The first is investment in a park, Camelot Park Improvements, which is on southeast side, kind of far east. So some needed investment in that area and excited to see that. And then secondly, adding a full-time staff position that's supported by grants to our Office of Sustainability to help us meet those climate goals around reducing our carbon footprint and meeting our renewable energy goal. So just wanted to highlight those for you all. I hope that's helpful. Again, thank you so much for coming out. A reminder that we won't have comments again at the end. So I just wanted to use my time to thank you, highlight what we got, a few things that we got done today, and just reshare our commitment to doing more. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Essassi?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you all for coming out tonight. These sorts of events are a great way to connect, even if you've been at one, it's always a little bit different with different themes. I want to say thank you to Dr. Riley Monkowitz. I'm going to add the doctor, you earned it. So I heard, I heard that shared earlier today. Thank you for bringing the engagement, encouraging people to come out and, and the entire team that went behind it and, and to put this together into GRPS for hosting us. I wanted to highlight a few things. One, thank you to our City Clerk's Office for being here tonight to talk to people about a number of things. Obviously, right now, we're getting ready for a primary election. We're doing early voting in our city and also just talking about opportunities that we have to serve on a number of boards and commissions in our appointments process. Each body is a little bit different. What might be being looked on one body could be different from another. But we do keep your application on file for one year and are, under our leadership of our chair, Commissioner Perdue looking for ways to continue to process and improve that, that environment. Second, in kind of the continuation of how do we look at the amount of our city services priorities as a, is a, is a is multiple things. And so Commissioner Perdue, you highlighted the grant-funded positions. I wanted to highlight the work that the Police Department did as it related to moving a subpoena process role to a civilian, that civilian work. And so I think that is continued efforts to understand how do we balance the needs of public safety? What work can be done by non-sparan officers? So wanted to highlight that today. Over the next week, there'll be a number of what I'll call signature events that are happening in our city. And I wanted to highlight two of them that I'm excited about. One is the Hispanic Festival that is going to be happening. I'm sorry, Hispanic Center folks, I don't remember the number of years, but it's been a number of years. I served on that board for many. It's a great way to connect with a variety of vendors, small businesses, and celebrate our Latino culture here in the city of Grand Rapids. As well as the Glimpse of Africa. This is another great festival that is put on. It's over three days now, highlighting different African individuals who are bringing in their goods, really coming from the diaspora, recognizing that changing population and culture here in West Michigan. And Ms. Farida Kanini has done a great job to continue bringing that culture to Grand Rapids. And then lastly, next week will be, certainly the City Clerk will talk about it, I'm sure, when we get to his part. It's election day, it's primary day, but it's also National Night Out. And I know the city has posted a number of community organizations and neighborhood associations that are having events on that day, which often include food, engaging in our local parks, connecting with neighbors, interacting with a variety of different city departments. So I'll just encourage you all after you've voted, or you maybe you voted by absentee ballot, or you went to early vote, to connect with those organizations. I really do see our neighborhood associations as mini-city halls to connect elected leaders and residents and other community groups to what's going on. And I hope to attend a number of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Turn down here, Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Last commission meeting, I had the opportunity to step away there in the middle of the day to attend a conference in Lansing with our planning director to speak to the American Planning Association about the work that Grand Rapids has done in the, in the land use space around housing. And it was, it was an interesting conversation, I think, that, that, you know, understanding the, you know, we know that there's a housing shortage and a need in our community and the fact that other communities have really looked to Grand Rapids now as being a leader in that space. Again, knowing we haven't solved the problem, but that we've, we've been willing to take steps, bold steps over some of the things that we do control, which is our land use. And I say all that as a framing of the conversation we had earlier today around a potential change to our pilot ordinance, which I, you know, I encourage anyone to go back and watch the meeting this morning. It was, you know, wasn't that we voted on anything, but it was the start of a discussion about a new tool that's in the the state has, has allowed cities to opt in to, to be able to, to, you know, leverage assets so that we, we have the ability to potentially build more housing. And I was just encouraged by the conversation this morning with our colleagues. I thought it was a healthy and robust dialogue about the issue and how we can best use those tools to, to support the people in our community who are doing good work and trying to address those concerns. And unfortunately, housing is a long cycle. It doesn't happen overnight. As much as I'd like to, you know, have 14,000 units available today, it, it won't happen. But it, but we, I think, are doing things that are moving the needle, especially compared to other, you know, competing municipalities in the state and across the Midwest. And so I'm looking forward to that ongoing conversation about how we best utilize those tools to support the people in our community who are, who are doing good things.
Thanks, Commissioner, and thanks for representing us there. Commissioner, Commissioner Knight?
Yeah, thank you all, again echoing the sentiments of all of my colleagues who touched on a lot of pieces of things that are going on here in our community. And I think I, I don't need to continue to go back over what they said because I think they said it eloquently, but what I will say is there's always a plethora of information that's engaged around a lot of the comments and statements and things that people have spoken about and shared their heart about tonight. And I just want to encourage you all to continue to reach out to get more information. Knowledge is power and to make sure that you have the information and the tools you need to continue to empower you to be great advocates for the community. There are a lot of things that we might have bits and pieces on, but there's more information that's out there. And I remember first starting with the City Commission, that's one of the things that a city attorney said is that you may hear one side of the story, but there's always more, right? There's always more that we can glean. So I just want to encourage you all to connect with your city officials, your commissioners that are here. There are people representing a number of the departments here in the city who would love to share more information about what they do, how they do it, how you can get engaged, how you can be a part of. So just really encouraging you all to stay connected. And if you don't know where to start, just come ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appointments, anything to say before I move along? All right. Okay, my clerk reminded me that I skipped something. So one, I'll just add my thanks to both GRPS for hosting and to all of the city staff and everyone who came out tonight to speak. Again, we still do have three scheduled public hearings we're going to get to momentarily, but I need to go back up one agenda item and ask my colleagues to approve the minutes from our last meeting that occurred on July 16th. Commissioners, can I get a motion for that?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Any additions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications, and we have two items before us today.
Yeah, the first one is a communication received from Grand Rapids Climate Coalition regarding a greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal.
That is received and filed.
And a petition received urging City Commission to maintain quality-of-life policing methods.
And that is also received and filed. All right, that'll take us to reports of city officers.
Comptroller's warrant report for the period of June 28, 2024, through July 15, 2024, in the amount of $26,409,422.64.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's report for the period of July 1, 2024, through July 16, 2024.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today, where there was a voice vote, and that was a unanimous vote. And so tonight, with one voice vote, we will adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Suppose.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, anything to add? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
It's an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2024-23 for the Fiscal Year 2025 Amendment Number 1.
Suppose.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, from our fiscal committee, want to tell us about this item?
Yes, Mayor. Six items tonight. First item is a grant that we received to support a new position in the Office of Sustainability and Strategy. Item two is just an extension of the COPS grant, which we received a couple of years ago that will support community policing efforts and, and having community police officers in our neighborhoods as soon as we reach the appropriate staffing levels. Items three, four, five, and six are through the Engineering Department. It replaces a sewer main, adds a new pump station, replaces a water main, and it is the reconstruction of God, Godfrey Avenue.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Essassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Goey?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. And Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Suppose.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to City Commission Resolutions. We do have one resolution tonight, and in order to bring that up, I will need a motion to suspend the rules. So Commissioners, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Suppose.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. So the rules are suspended, and we have one resolution before us.
It's Colzer versus Westrick at All City Commission Resolution approving settlement.
All right, can I get a motion?
Suppose.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Essassi, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Today on, on, in our meeting, we, the matter of Kevin Golser versus Aaron Westrick at All, a federal lawsuit that was presented to the City Commission in our executive session. During that time, the settlement of the matter and all potential claims related therein too was recommended the amount of $97,000, and the attached resolution was in our packet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. So we, on our agenda, we have six scheduled public hearings, but several of these items are for the same project. So with the support of my colleagues, I'm going to look for a head nod. I'm going to combine public hearings one, two, and three, and then five and six. So I'm seeing support for that. So we're going to start with the first one. I'm going to read those. I will then turn it over to our new Economic Development Director, Ms. Sarah Renero, to tell us about these items. I'll see if my colleagues have any questions. I believe we have representation from each of these projects here tonight. So if you want to come up and share additional information, you're welcome to do that. And then we'll open it up to see if anyone is here who would like to speak on these items. So the first three are all related to a project located at 2040 Division Avenue South. We have a public hearing to consider a brownfield plan amendment for the Emory redevelopment project located at 2040 Division Avenue South. That is coupled with a public hearing to consider an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for the diatribe located at the same location, 2040 Division Avenue South. And then a public hearing related to a consideration and application for a 12-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant again to PA 146 of 2000 for the diatribe at 2040 Division Avenue South. So with that, as I said, I'll turn to our Economic Development Director, and then we'll turn to the representatives of this project, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have Megan Smith-Jovanovic here with the diatribe to talk a little bit about the neighborhood engagement. And before we do that, I just want to tell you a little bit about the project. So the developer plans to rehabilitate the existing building into a mixed-use property that will include programmatic and office space for the diatribe's headquarters and commercial space on the ground floor. The second floor will be dedicated to renovating eight apartments to be rented at households earning at or below 60% of the area median income, and the basement will be a performing arts venue. The project is anticipated to be LEED certified, and the investment, the total private investment is $7 million, with about five of that dedicated to construction costs. The developer's requesting reimbursement in this first public hearing in regards to reimbursement related to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority reimbursement, and it's $185,840 in brownfield eligible activities, which are traditional lead and asbestos and demo in this instance. The amendment is expected to remain in place for 22 years, and the developer is anticipated to be fully reimbursed for those eligible activities after 17 years. In addition to seeking the reimbursement for the TIF, the developer is also seeking an Oprah District and an exemption certificate. The project qualifies for a 12-year Oprah pursuant to City Commission Policy 900-42 because it meets two criteria. The first is that it's LEED certified, and the second is that it's, that all eight of the proposed apartments will be affordable to individuals again, and families earning, earning less than 80% AMI. The developers submitted an inclusion plan that describes aspirational goals for both hard costs and oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, so for hard, for construction costs that equate to 35% overall subcontractor participation from micro-local, women-owned, and minority-owned business enterprises. In addition, there's also a goal for professional services that equates to 12%. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Megan to give you a little bit more from the project.
All right, welcome. It's good to see you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for a moment just to speak about this project. I'm Megan Smith-Jovanovic. I am a proud resident in Kent County, and I represent the diatribe, which is a local arts and culture organization, which I know many of you are familiar with. We started with a group of artists presenting the first blind, deaf-inclusive art prize exhibit. Found ourselves in classrooms with students who identified with the teaching artists in front of them, formed a nonprofit in 2016, and have been on a really nice path of, path of growth since then. We formalized curriculum, and we have two main programs that we run in schools. One focused on poetry and mental health and exploration of identity. We often work in middle school and high school, and you can imagine that that's a time when a lot of students are figuring out their place in their family, in their community, and in the world. So we offer as well a program called Writing to Right Wrongs in partnership with the Fair Housing Center. We empower our students with an understanding of historical inequities and redlining and the impact that that has in our community. All of a sudden, in, in 2020, we couldn't do our school programs anymore, and we couldn't do our work in community through creating public art projects. So we pivoted to a public art project that served the 49507 area. You've probably seen one of our 17 murals throughout the 49507 area. Each of them has a QR code next to it that actually shares the lending maps from the 1930s and 40s. So you can ask some questions about investment. I highly encourage you to grab some friends, ride your bikes, pick three murals, and take a moment to really enjoy. All of those were co-created with our neighbors through conversations each year with 150 of them. 90 students each year contributing to those works. But we didn't just ask them about art. We asked them about what they wanted to see in community, and that's how this project came to be. This also aligns with the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Plan that included this particular property as a mixed-use development. But we listened to our neighbors about what they wanted to see. There isn't really a coffee shop to walk through in this part of Division. So that's one of the tenants that we're hoping to attract to one of the four retail spaces. They're all priced below market rate so that we can help young entrepreneurs, creative entrepreneurs, launch their businesses and grow. The second floor will have eight live-work units for residences. Two, two will be studios, four will be one bedrooms, and two will be two bedrooms. One of those studios is going to be reserved for artist residency programs. We'd really love to have artists on our stage in our performance art venue, reading their chapbook in the bookstore and staying and working with our students in the workshop space. So all of this really for us is a culmination of years of work of working with our neighbors and of listening to what our neighborhood needs. So we're very excited to be part of this transformation, to be part of this investment, and we're grateful to the city to recognize that taking this property and making it into a new acre, anchor for our community is really in the best interest. So we appreciate the support for the project. We did mention some of our inclusion plan goals. We just got our bids back, and we're sitting at 44% minority inclusion for this project right now, which is really incredible investment to be able to keep more of those dollars local. So really grateful for the support. Shout out to Jess Solis, who has been working with us for two years on this project, and really grateful to have Sarah joining the team. So I also am happy to answer any questions if there are any, but otherwise, we'll turn it back. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Megan. It's good to see you, and I was sitting here trying to remember what year it was that I first walked through this building. It was several years ago, so I'm glad to see this finally get in front of us. I know it's been a long time coming. It's been quite a journey, and, you know, I was one of the many voices encouraging the state to provide funding to this project as well, so I was glad to see that move forward and glad that the city is in a position potentially to support these, both the Oprahs and the project right here. My only question, I'm looking at timeline, are you still hoping to break ground this year and be open next year?
Yeah, so some of the great news, we've already made environmental improvements. So there's no more hazardous material in this building. Let's give a round of applause for that for our neighbors, right? We love to see that. So we've already begun some of the internal work. We have an old elevator shaft that we're going to have to fill in, so the city said, like, if you don't, if you keep it on the inside of the building, we're okay with that, but otherwise, we have to wait until all of this gets approved in August. So we're hoping to break ground yet this year. We want to be occupying the space next year and starting to pilot programs in community, after school, really starting to expand our work.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Sarah or Megan? All right, Commissioner?
I just want to say thank you to Diatribe and to your efforts in terms of inclusive use of vendors. Forty-four percent is certainly a high mark for us, and hopefully others can follow your example.
Thank you. All right, thank you both. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I was not, I was not, I was questioning myself if I was going to ask it or not. So I think, to your point, Mayor, kind of the variety of funding that came through this project, I think it would be good to highlight. So you all received RAP money, the first round or second round that we did? I can't, I mean, maybe that doesn't matter.
First round.
Yes, 2.0.
Yep.
2.0.
Yeah, so the city, we are a sub-grantee of the city's award for RAP 2.0, and that's just under half a million dollars, focused on the affordable housing elements. Because we're not taking traditional banding techniques to, like, if you get a raise, you have to move, we're not doing that. So we haven't qualified for a lot of affordable housing. So we're really, really grateful for the opportunity to partner with the city and try a different approach to affordable housing.
Because I was like, you guys didn't do a li-tuck, yeah.
No, no, we couldn't, because
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's too restrictive. We heard, we heard from our neighbors that that is a really terrible way to operate, and we're not going to do it.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to, again, I think this is interesting, kind of like, we were talking earlier today, I think Commissioner O'Connor, talking about like what the capital stack was.
Oh, yeah, I'm happy to walk through that.
I think you received some congressional dollars from?
We haven't received any federal funding for the project. The state funding is 3.5 million.
Okay.
And that's specifically focused on the goals around construction and inclusive construction practices. And I'd be happy to share what we were able to do to reach those numbers. It definitely was a lot of groundwork and relationship building.
And then you mentioned the environmental piece, so from a, from the Brownfield perspective, I don't, I wasn't at the last meeting, I wasn't actually at the last two meetings, but, no, you went through the environmental, that, those grant dollars that we have, which we just, at our last meeting, expanded kind of the definition of that.
Yes, thank you.
So wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, that was a great opportunity, because it took care of not only some of those traditional elements, but really did help expand, making a building that's been obsolete for a long time be able to come back on.
And so do you all have, so is all the funding then set?
Currently, so we just got all those construction bids back. They came back, you know, our May 2023 numbers is what we based our initial estimates on, and they came back 1.7 higher.
Okay.
So, so we are looking to close a gap. We can finance some of that through IFF and hopefully maybe some PRI funding from some of our fabulous local foundations, but we're still looking to close a gap of about a million dollars.
About a million dollars. Okay, great, thanks for reviewing that, Megan.
And I wanted to mention, we've also had our neighbors through on tours. Those are still publicly openly available. Just sign up on our website. Folks can come by and learn what we're up to. Just wear closed-toed shoes, and we have a hard hat for you.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate that additional information. All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on this project, you are welcome to come forward. Again, we ask that you share your name, the city that you're, that you live in, and you'll be provided up to three minutes to speak. So is there anyone here tonight who wishes to be heard on this specific project related to the Oprah and the Brownfield Plan?
I was always a believer in equal time. Lucas, first word, don't live close to it, but I'm humbled by the Diatribe. Use my big mouth for a lot of things over the first three years being here, and I wanted to use my big mouth to talk about how inspiring this is. And a lot of times, quote-unquote, "my crowd" has been in here looking at you saying, "We all know this is going to pass anyway. We all know this is going to pass," and I think that's really nice to say. The developer in this case, I just, shameless little plug real quick for Peter. I was just momentarily overjoyed to find out it was his project. Some time ago, when I was up here talking about some of the data that is apparently demanded by the process of these developers, they don't necessarily want to have to do it. You ask them to do weird research, like having to Google and make up what people might make per hour in these spaces, which is a problem we probably should tackle as a community. But I met up with Peter for a one-hour beer summit at Mitten. Three hours later, I learned that he's an incredibly thoughtful developer with a lot of the right head for community. And I think him and this project together is something that, I've told you, you know, I've mad at you before for other things, you don't, you don't put this one through. I'm going to be your enemy for life. This is a beautiful thing, and thank you for entertaining it, so.
Thanks, Lucas. And I agree, Peter's awesome. We're glad he's in Grand Rapids. Still, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Alicia Marie Belshak. I live in the first ward, and I am really thrilled to be seeing a project of this magnitude and this heart-centered feel as well. The Diatribe is a very impressive organization, as you already know, and I am awed listening to the presentation tonight. The thoughtfulness of community engagement, the ability to think about affordable housing and diverse pricing options, the idea that we can support innovative artists and people who are thinking outside of the box and give them a venue, and of course, bringing a community together in the process is amazing. And I am so very thrilled to be seeing more Brownfield development in our area, seeing the environmental impacts improved, seeing these business corridor along Division be able to become even more vibrant and hopefully be a new hotspot in our city. And I just want to really throw my support behind this project and be very pleased to see you guys pass this, give them all the funding that they ask for and the community support that they need. I think that this kind of thinking is what's going to make our community better, stronger, and be addressing those affordable housing needs, as Commissioner O'Connor brought up. And I just want to say that as a, as a mom of a very artistic child growing up, I think we were very blessed because we had Wim Cat near us, but I am happy to see that more people will be able to have that opportunity, because expression and just all the other things that we need to be able to be real humans with each other is necessary. So thank you very much for putting this together to the Diatribe and to everyone who's participated, and please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard, hi.
Hello, my name is Gleason. I'm a co-founder of the Diatribe and super grateful for this opportunity. As someone who didn't always feel like I had a voice, this organization has been an opportunity for me to give a platform to others. And this building and this project is an opportunity to uplift a community without displacement, and we've been incredibly intentional about every aspect of the project. And so we are deeply grateful for the opportunity to have funding, to invest in this community, and to continue to uplift youth voices, but not just youth voices, but everyone in this area, in this community that deserve to be heard. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your work. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Siné Gant Jordan. I sit on the Corridor Improvement Authority, I co-chair for Division Grandville, and I'm pleased to see this project moving forward. That building was an eyesore. We have been working diligently trying to improve our corridor, our business districts, two business districts in this corridor, and they both need work, and these are the projects that we like to see moving forward. So thank you for all the work that you are, have done to support the Diatribe, and I'm sure more projects like this will be coming. I'm so happy to know how intentional this work has been, because this is the kind of change that we've been fighting for, right? Projects that change a community, projects that change underserved communities, projects that serve underserved people and hear their voices and empower them to do what they see fit for their community. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Siné. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard for this project?
Hello, my name is Journey again. I absolutely love to see that this is going to actually become official. I walked through, and it was absolutely amazing just hearing the vision and seeing their mission for it. So that's impactful, and I hope that we get more. In my opinion, I would love to see something like this in the southeast side, specifically over there by Franklin and Madison. I do have a vision for myself. I would love to have my own community center, and it is based off of poetry, art, but I would also love to include business entrepreneurship, just to get more kids involved that we already have. But that is just what I want to say.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on this project?
Daniel Scut again. I don't know a lot about the organization that is working on this project, but as a longtime sometime resident, but longtime minister in the neighborhood, our one fellowship is at 229 South Division. Our ministry began in this very area, November 4, 1980. And back then, this area was rife with slaves, sex slaves. A night like tonight with this nice warm weather in the, in the 80s, you would see 10, 15, 20, sometimes 30 women in this area being forced to sell themselves to support a habit, or just because they're slave owners were forcing them to do this. So I want to acknowledge this project. Any upgrade in this whole corridor is an improvement, and I give my full approval. And by the way, I want to thank, if any of you had anything to do with decreasing and almost making it clean of this former sex slavery, I know a lot of it's still online, but now you can drive down South Division. And I do it often, of course, and I don't see any women in sex slavery. And so I know the city has had a purpose to do that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, law enforcement.
All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on this public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close that public hearing, and all three of these items will be referred back to our committee of the whole at our next meeting. All right, next that will take us to our next public hearing, this is a public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Pleasant Hills redevelopment project located at 425 and 444 Pleasant Street Southwest and 535 Church Place Southwest. So this is a project being completed by Habitat for Humanity here in Kent County, doing great work around housing. So again, we'll start this off with our executive, or our Director of Economic Development, I almost called you Executive Director, but our Director, Ms. Sarah Renaro, and then we'll turn to our representatives from Habitat, and then I'll see if my colleagues have questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a public hearing to consider Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Pleasant Hills redevelopment project. This project includes just over three acres, an office building, storage garage, two churches, significant disrepair of these buildings. The developer plans to demolish a majority of the structures and will keep their headquarters, the building located at 425 Pleasant. The project will result in a total of 27 new for-sale residential units. It will be a mixture of family homes and townhomes. All of the units will be Energy Star certified, and at least 22 of the units will be sold to households earning at or below 80% of the area median income, and the remaining five units will be sold to houses earning up to 120 AMI. The total project investment is 12.1 million, with 11 million in construction costs, and the developer is requesting reimbursement from the BRA in the amount of roughly 2.6 million for housing development activities due to the changes in the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act last fall.
Page turner. I know it is.
For this project, the housing development activities include reimbursement to fill the financing gap associated with the development of the housing units priced for those income qualified households, and that subsidy for potential development loss. As proposed, the attached amendment provides for the first $500,000 to be paid from a grant with the local Brownfield Redevelopment revolving fund, and that will be helped, that will be used to help support the PDL pursuant to the interim guidelines. Finally, the developer has submitted an inclusion plan that describes aspirational goals for both hard costs and professional costs. We've got 15% commitment for subcontractor participation for micro-local, women-owned, and minority-owned business enterprises, which equates to about 1.65 million out of the 11 million in construction costs. And we've got another $500,000 dedicated in professional service costs that equate to 20% for participation from MBEs. And with that, I'd like to invite Andrew to talk a little bit more about the neighborhood engagement. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Commissioners, everyone, for letting us come to talk about this project tonight. This has been a year in the works for Habitat for Humanity. As you know, our offices are located on this site, so it's something that's really special to us and something we've been visioning for a lot longer than just the past year. But that year-long process started with a community engagement with the residents around Roosevelt Park, talking to them about what the redevelopment of this site would look like and what would be important to them. Currently, the site is home to a pretty extensive garden behind our offices, and so maintaining that garden was a priority for the residents. And so I hope you see in the plans that we're presenting here, the continued green, use of the green space that will be open to residents surrounding the area to enjoy. Like Sarah said, we are targeting these to buyers below 80% AMI and looking at long-term affordability through a deed restriction that will allow these to maintain affordable prices for the next 90 years. Our goal is to start construction on the 444 site, which is at the bottom of the picture you're looking at there, this fall, or potentially next spring, and then following up what we're calling Phase Two next summer. And then I'll invite Elizabeth to talk about some of the environmental work.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I'm with SME. We are the Brownfield and Environmental Consultant that's been working with Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to take a minute to address a question that I believe was received ahead of this public hearing as it relates to former uses at the site. We did actually, through the assistance of Grand Rapids and with Eagle, do some site assessment work out there. We did complete Phase One environmental site assessments that didn't reveal any, any past histories that would, we would deem high risk as far as contamination goes. We do recognize that it is an urban site. There were former structures on, on the site, so that, that risk always does exist, and if that is encountered during construction, it's something we would test and ensure, ensure is disposed of properly. But again, just know you got that question in advance and wanted to address it.
Great, thank you for addressing that. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your work. This is such a beautiful location in our city. These homes are going to be incredible. I'm, I was so happy when you all brought forward this vision for this space. So I'll turn to my colleagues. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Asasi?
So while I'm not the Commissioner for this area, 425 Pleasant holds a very special place in my heart. My mom worked at the Hispanic Institute for many years, and my dad worked down the street at high school, now Sesar Chavez. So I went up and down this hill in a little baby car many times, and I would agree with you, Mayor, this site, you know, had the chance to do different things in the back, you know, events that you all have, but I think it's another reflection of, you know, kind of the, the AMI price point, the timeframe that you're looking at for affordability, and just repurposing, you know, what does
and just repurposing, you know, what does an organization need and who are they serving? You know, is it, are we building structures to, that are pretty, are we building spaces and places? And so the place that I used to go in, and, you know, this was like before two-generation was a word, there was, there was, you know, GED programs, there was stuff for kids, there was cooking classes, there was senior programs, and to know that, kind of that history of the Hispanic Institute has lived on in, in Habitat and will live on in a really important project in the city is just, just felt really good to be able to, you know, in the future, vote on this, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Commissioner, and it supports one of our goals of homeownership, so. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this public hearing. So if you are here tonight to be heard on this public hearing, you are welcome to come forward. Again, this is the project on Pleasant and Church for 27 for-sale residential units.
Hello again. Yes, and thank you for that history. Oh, Siné, Jordan, yeah, Jordan, thank you for that history, Melinda. I will say mine predates yours. So my, so I own the home that my grandmother purchased back in 1942, which sits right on, on that property, and I do plan on keeping it and restoring it. My mother grew up in that house, my children grew up in that house, that is my home, and I am again grateful for the partnership that Habitat is presenting to, to me and Sisters in Development. But, so before the Hispanic Center, it was Maplewood School, my sister attended that school, my mom attended that school, my children played in the field when that field was nothing. We took care of that field before Habitat came along, and that was a football field for the kids in the community. So it is very important to us that we continue to be part of the progress that happens there. And so if there's, again, I, I would just want to say again how grateful I am to Habitat, where are you, Andrew? And, and I look forward to being able to come back and report some good things that have come out of this. We are looking to hopefully do the Earn as You Learn program, and I know I've worked with Melinda, Commissioner Assisi, pulling some things together for that. And again, that's a piece that we have presented to the city for Sisters in Development. Earn as you learn, not workforce development, but career development. The workforce is very racial to me, I hate that, but again, that's where the funding is, because there's federal dollars behind that, I get it. But we want to change some of those things through some of these opportunities that are happening right in the space where we would live, work, and play. This is our opportunity for change, for, this is a, this is a neighborhood where the black people were redlined, and we keep forgetting to, to acknowledge that, that we have been there for a long time, and we deserve an opportunity. When development happens, it needs to happen with us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for sharing that rich history, clearly a place that is close to a lot of people's heart. Hi, welcome.
Hello again, Alicia Marie Belshak, first word. I feel remiss to speak highly of a housing project and not also throw my support behind this wonderful project too. So I feel that we do need to consider homeownership as part of our housing solutions. Habitat for Humanity has always done a great job of that, and looking at this area and just remembering that not only do we need to be considering the earned income of the households, but also the historic area and nature of the community. And I think that this is also important to remember that we need to give opportunities to other people who may not always have had first dibs at homeownership. And I love the inclusion plan, it, it's kind of hard to compete with 44%, so, but please consider always finding ways to do that. And I would also just remind the Commission to continue to educate people about the homeownership buying assistance program, which would help fund some of these kinds of homeowners. So we need to get that out there too, but thank you, and thank you for supporting this project.
Yeah, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this development or proposal? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing, and that will be referred back to our Committee of the Whole, and that will take us to our last public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing to consider an obsolete property rehabilitation district for J.D. Coop Properties located at 1163 Giddings Avenue Southeast. And then a companion to that is a public hearing to consider an application for a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for the same project, J.D. Coop Properties LLC located at 1163 Giddings Avenue Southeast. So same process, I'll have our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Sarah Renaro, tell us about this project. We'll see if there's representative, welcome representative here to speak to it. I'll see if my colleagues have a question or comment, and then we'll open it up for public comment. All right, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have Ryan Cooper here from the development team. We're happy to take questions at the end.
Great.
So this building is about 3,700 square feet and built in 1927. It's currently vacant and in need of significant repair. The plan for redevelopment is expected to occur in two phases, with the first phase really being to activate the three commercial spaces, and the second phase to be anticipated in the future, which will activate, will actually add a second story and eight apartments. Due to the small scale of the first phase of the project, which is about 150,000, the applicant is working with a single contractor in this case, and the company is, it'll be 100% rehabbed with a minority-owned business enterprise. The only other thing that I want to comment on is just that this is, this is a, it qualifies for the Oprah term, it's a base 10-year request. So with that, Ryan and I are here, unless you want to say anything?
Ryan, would you like to tell us anything about this project?
Well, I'll tell you that I've owned this property since I was 26 years old, I'm 44.
Wow.
It used to be a frozen yogurt shop that I owned with a co-owner. After COVID, we decided to shut it down, it just was too hard to maintain, and it's one of those businesses that didn't make it, just due to the, the nature of the business. Like I said, I bought it when I was 26 years old, I've leased it out to numerous tenants, but due to some ownership issues, I actually co-owned it with another person, I bought their interest in it about six months ago. The co-owner issue kind of inhibited me from developing the place, but I bought its interest, secured a loan, I actually put a new roof on it, but that's, that's all the treasurer would let me do because I couldn't pull any permits because of the Oprah. I would have probably had this place open and tenants in it already, but I had to wait, you know, to, to develop it, but I'm ready to go, I'm just waiting to get a approval from the, from you guys to start the development, and then, this is a first, the first phase is just a hundred and fifty dollar, $150,000 investment, and then I want to move into the second phase, which will be adding eight market rate apartments to the top, yeah, a second, second story, yeah.
That's awesome. Well, this building clearly needs some love, so we are glad that you're committed to that. So thank you. Let me see, colleagues, do you have any questions? Commissioner Goy?
Ryan, thank you so much for making that investment in the third ward. We're excited to have you, to be a partner with you and support you in this effort. I know that the third ward is, is going on a higher, on a upward trajectory as we listen and hear more of individual entrepreneurs like you doing small business projects like yours, so thank you for doing it. Thank you for engaging a minority contractor to do the work. Those are important things for us as we try to keep the money within our own community, so thank you so much for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, if you want to step aside, we'll see if anyone from the audience has any comments or questions, and if there are specific questions, then I'll have you come back up. Is there anyone here tonight to be heard on this public hearing or this project and this request for an Oprah? All right, seeing none, you're off the hook for answering any other questions. I'll close this public hearing, and this will be referred back to our Committee of the Whole, and then after that, hopefully you'll be able to get moving, and all of us will be able to go and get a tour. So with that, I want to thank everyone again for coming out tonight. Thank you, GRPS, for hosting, and we are adjourned. Safe travels, everyone.